Hey, we thank you for your patience. We cannot begin our many meetings early, but we can start them late. So, yeah, yeah, even if we don't want to. All right, we'd like to welcome you all and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Hall, I mean, City Council this October fourteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. In the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have members of the council that are present, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, excuse, Councilmember Hune, Councilmember Christensen is online, Councilmember Norfelt, myself. We're also joined at the dais by our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We'll have our opening ceremony. If you'd please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance. Hey, thank you. We now have our minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Turn the time to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from October fourteenth.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. Thank you. All right, we have our proclamation this evening, and we'll turn the time over to Councilmember Wood to read that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring November first, twenty twenty five as Extra Mile Day in West Valley City. Whereas West Valley City is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists with the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas West Valley City is a community which encourages its residents or its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas West Valley City is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas West Valley City acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty Extra Mile Cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, twenty twenty five. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim November first, twenty twenty five to be Extra Mile Day. We urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Dated this twenty eighth day of October, twenty twenty five, and signed by West Valley City Mayor Karen Lang.
Okay, thank you. We have volunteers with us this evening from the Harmon Senior Recreation Center that will come up and accept the proclamation and have a photo with the council. And then one of the volunteers would like to say a few words.
Well, hello.
Hello. People see you? There we go. You should.
You're sure.
Thank you.
How are you?
I bet you do.
We're not connected. I have to see.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. Now, I think you know it's all over me.
Let's have you just line up in front of the television screen.
Just share them.
Yes, I will.
Let's make sure I can get everybody in. Oh, we need to act like we love being with each other. It's a little tighter. A little closer. I'm loving it. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want her to say a few words?
Sure. Well, since this is volunteers, I was volunteered to talk. Because I call bingo at the center, and as you can see, we're forever young. That's what the center is all about. We're open from nine to three, Monday through Friday, and there is something going on every single day, every hour that we're there. It's just a great center. We invite every one of you to come and tour the center if you've not been there. How many have been there to the center? There you go. We're right down the street there. We need you to come and tour the center, and if you're over sixty, we invite you to come and visit the center. We play bingo on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I call on Tuesday. So when you come, if I call I twenty-two, you're going to hear all these chickens going off, and you're going to hear everybody hollering, tut-tut. And then it's in forty, it's forty. Well, we enjoy being there. We enjoy everything. Our center volunteers are the best. And our group, Cindy, Emma, the rest of the staff are absolutely marvelous. And we wouldn't be who we are if it wasn't for them. So thank you for letting me have this time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty, thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment should limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address. All comments shall be directed, nope, next line. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers should not expect any debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, city council, and city staff may respond after the comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the city council. Now, we do have two public hearings tonight that are separate from the open public comment period. So if you're here for the JAG grant or the application S A five, twenty twenty five for the West Valley City, West Valley Land Holding subdivision, it will be best to hold your comments until that is, that item is presented. So we'll begin with Speaker one.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and neighbors. I stand here tonight because our city's beloved golf course, The Ridge, a place where generations have gathered, where wildlife still thrives, and where open spaces give our community room to breathe, is at risk of being sold for development. If we're talking about multi-unit developments, apartments, condos, townhomes built on small crowded lots, then let's be honest, that's not affordable living. That's profit-driven density. Just look at Harriman, drive south on Mountain View Corridor. An overpopulated, overcrowded concrete jungle with inadequate infrastructure that causes congestion of all types and yet still has high taxes. Is that the city that you guys and we want? I don't think so. And at what cost? There are things you just can't put a price on. The loss of wildlife that still finds refuge on that course. The foxes, deer, geese, cranes, and hawks that remind us that we share this land. Once the open space is gone, it's gone forever. No amount of concrete or planned green space can replace that beautiful green space and living ecosystem. I have to ask, where's the vision? This decision feels short-sighted and desperate. Who truly benefits here? Besides developers, real estate brokers, and lobbyists? Certainly not the residents of this city. Have other options been seriously considered? Have you explored revenue ideas that preserve this land instead of erasing it? Some of you even campaigned on your commitment to preserve and even expand the city's green space. Are you going to honor that commitment? And if the course is sold, what happens the next time the city needs money? Do we sell another positive thing of this city? Do we sell another park, another piece of our heritage? Is this about responsible management, or is it desperation or worse, financial mismanagement? We deserve transparency. You say there's nothing on your agenda concerning the sale of the golf course, but how much money was spent on the land use and other surveys that you had conducted? They can't be cheap. How did we get in the position to even consider such a drastic and devastating course of action? We deserve leadership that plans for the next generation, not just the next fiscal cycle. And we deserve a city government that listens to the residents, not just special interests. You say you need to consider all the residents of the city. Then do that. You know that no one wants more crowded population and all the negatives that come with it. Traffic congestion, more crime, more pollution. Or do they want a beautiful ecosystem that has positive effects on the environment and the beauty of our city?
And your time is up. Thank you so much. Okay, Speaker two.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Adams, and I'm the Utah State Director of the Veterans Golf Association, V G A, and I'm here to speak tonight on the significant impact The Ridge Golf Course has on veterans. The V G A boasts over thirty thousand national members, and we have over four hundred members here alone in Utah. We proudly play at The Ridge. Through my experience with over forty golf courses across the state, I can confidently say to you that no golf course in the state of Utah treats veterans better than The Ridge does. The Ridge supports veterans in unique ways. The Ridge has its own Veterans League that plays at the course every Monday, and the league hosts over a hundred veterans that come out Mondays and play there. It also supports something called Veterans on the Course, a unique program that brings veterans together, teaches them the game of golf, gives them lessons, has a speaker that comes out and motivates, motivates them. And for the V G A, we hold over three events there every year. In fact, we have our annual Veterans Day event there coming up two weeks from today, and I encourage all of you members here to come out and join us. Speak to the veterans. Come play golf with us. See what it's all about and see what this community does and this golf course does to help veterans. The power of golf has a significant impact on veterans. The V G A was established over ten years ago with a mission to unite veterans and their families through the game of golf, and The Ridge has embraced that mission. And it's just more than a mission. More than any other course in Utah, The Ridge provides veterans with the chance to connect with their battle buddies, get off their couch, find motivation, find a reason to show up the next Monday. A lot of times, that's very hard for veterans to do. And it's a critical issue. In our country, seventeen veterans tragically take their lives every day. Since the ten years that the V G A has been around and with our thirty thousand members, we only have two members who've committed suicide. I think that that statistic underscores how the game of golf, The Ridge Veterans League, Veterans on the Course program, and the V G A are genuinely saving lives. While we often hear, "Thank you for your service," actions speak louder than words, and you can honor our service by supporting things like The Ridge and bringing all of us together, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Speaker three. Just taking up your own time, so no applause, please. We want to hear for everybody that signed up.
Mayor, city council, and members and the West Valley City leaders, my name is David Rock. I've been a resident of West Valley for over forty-one years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thirty-five years ago, the leaders of West Valley City made a visionary decision to set aside open space to create The Ridge Golf Course. That choice gave our community more than a golf course. It gave us a gathering place, a source of pride and a green space that connects people, nature, and neighborhoods. Today, The Ridge is where families make memories, where local businesses benefit from visitors, and where residents come to enjoy the outdoors. It is a public investment that continues to give back to our, to our city year after year. But now this community treasure possibly could be in danger. As we know, we have heard the city manager, the mayor, and this council are considering selling The Ridge for private development. If this happens, this land, this public asset, will be gone forever. The Ridge matters for four, for four important reasons. It is a gathering, number one, it's a gathering place for everyone. Golf teaches honesty, respect, and discipline, values that strengthen our community. Number two, it is a part of our city's legacy. The newly renovated clubhouse hosts weddings, reunions, and celebrations. It's a part of our identity. Number three, it's publicly owned, it's public-owned and irreplaceable. This is our land bought with public funds for the public benefit. Number four, it's vital, it's vital for our environment and health. Nearly two hundred acres of green space captures over a hundred and fifty tons of carbon a year, supports the local wildlife, and improves our air quality, something we know that matters here in the Salt Lake Valley. Selling The Ridge for development would be, would be more traffic, more pollution, and less open space. And once it's gone, it's gone forever. We are asking our leaders to be stewards, not sellers, to protect, to protect public land, not liquidate it. Your, your own city website says, "We are pleased to continue to preserve and protect the valuable assets of the city for the benefit of those who live, work, and play here." We agree. We ask, we ask you to honor that promise by protecting The Ridge. Finally, we call on the city council to reject any plan to sell, to sell or develop The Ridge and pass a resolution protecting all publicly owned spaces for the long-term health and happiness of our community. Our open spaces belong to all of us, not to developers, not to special interests, but to the people of West Valley City. Let's keep them that way. To save our open spaces, save The Ridge, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker four.
To the mayor, city council, and all citizens of West Valley City, I would like to express my opposition to the proposed sale of The Ridge Golf Course for housing and/or commercial development. While I understand the city's desire to increase housing availability, I believe this proposal would be detrimental to all citizens of our community for several reasons. First, The Ridge is one of the few green spaces in West Valley City that is both self-sustaining and widely used by the residents. The course generates enough revenue through green fees to cover its regular operating costs with only occasional need for larger capital support. It provides recreational, environmental, and community value that cannot easily be replaced once lost. Second, the proposed development raises questions about long-term community balance. Our city already provides a significant share of low-income and subsidized housing. While affordable housing is an important goal, adding more concentrated developments of any type can bring on additional challenges related to infrastructure strain, public safety, and school capacity, all of which ultimately impact taxpayers. Rather than eliminating a successful amenity, I urge the city to explore ways to preserve The Ridge while still pursuing smart, balanced growth, such as adaptive reuse of underutilized commercial spaces, mixed-income housing models, or redevelopment of belighted areas better might meet the housing needs without sacrificing one of our community's most valuable assets. Thank you for considering the long-term impact on our city's quality of life, our recreational opportunities, and our fiscal health. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker five.
Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, I am a concerned resident to strongly urge you not to sell The Ridge Golf Course to private developers. This course is a vital community asset that benefits far more than a handful of golfers. It supports our city's youth, local businesses, and overall quality of life. Selling The Ridge would primarily serve the interests of developers, not the citizens who live, work, and recreate here. The golf course is one of the few remaining open spaces that provides recreation, scenic beauty, and economic benefit to the city. Once it is gone, it cannot be replaced. The Ridge serves as a practice and competition site for local high school golf teams, offering young athletes an affordable and accessible venue to develop their skills and represent our community with pride. Losing this course would severely limit opportunities for these students and diminish our city's support for youth sports. In addition, many local companies and organizations host annual tournaments at The Ridge, events that bring people together, support local charities, and contribute to the city's economy. These gatherings foster community spirit and attract visitors to West Valley City, benefits that far outweigh any short-term financial gain from selling the land. Public spaces like The Ridge are rare and invaluable. They are part of what makes our community livable and welcoming. Once developed, that open space and the sense of community it provides will be lost forever. I urge the council to act in the long-term interest of its citizens and preserve The Ridge for future generations. I thank you for your time and your continued service to the city. I hope you will stand with residents, students, and local businesses who wish to keep The Ridge as a public golf course and community treasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker six.
Mayor Lang, members of the council, my name is Paul Pugmeyer. I am the president of First T Utah. First T is a youth development nonprofit. We teach Utah kids character values and life skills through golf. I also am the host of Utah Golf Radio, a golf talk show on ESPN seven hundred. Through these two perspectives, I see that statewide golf courses provide an opportunity and a facility and a mechanism for communities to gather and flourish. And I am here today to ask you to keep The Ridge, The Ridge, and to speak in support of that great facility. It is known and beloved throughout the state. I have seen similar efforts to take a golf course that seems to be an easy piece of land to sell for a short-term gain. And I've seen the situations where that is done, and I've seen the situations where the community rises and keeps it from being done, as you see here tonight from your community. In each case where that golf course stays, that community flourishes around that golf course. And it continues to serve constituencies and communities and groups of people in that facility. You heard from the veterans, you heard references to the youth service there. That's something where I have a particular expertise and interest through First T. I see it every day. You see it throughout the community. I have had the privilege of serving on a city council for eight years. I stand here with deep respect and understanding what it takes to construct and administer a city budget. I admire what you do. But I encourage you to do that while maintaining the community assets that you already have. And you have one of the best in the state in The Ridge. Please keep The Ridge, The Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker seven.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. My name is John Keen. I live less than five minutes from The Ridge. I golf there several times a week. The Ridge is one of the most-used courses in Salt Lake County. It serves all members of the community, men, women, youth, seniors. High schools use it for their golf teams. We need to preserve our open spaces and protect the wildlife. I observe deer, foxes, eagles, hawks, geese every time I play there. There are so many reasons not to destroy something so beautiful. There are fewer and fewer open spaces, and they are vital to the community. And the practicality, you know, it takes me forty-five minutes to an hour to get to Salt Lake or back to where I live in West Valley. We're now building the University of Utah Medical Center, and if you put a bunch of townhomes and houses where The Ridge is, that's going to increase traffic so much. There's two high schools in between there. You know, fifty-six hundred West is like a freeway as it is. Yeah, it's dangerous just to get out of our street, and putting more and more congestion there is not what we need. On your West Valley website, you swear to protect and preserve the valuable assets for the benefit of those who live, work, and play here. Why are you proposing not to do this? No, no people living near the golf course want this. Thousands in the Salt Lake County are opposed. Please listen to these people and all of their voices. You know, within the last ten, fifteen years, we've lost Windpoint, The Ranches. It's hard enough to get out of a golf course as it is, tee times. You know, don't feel to West Valley City what The Ranches did to Eagle Mountain. A question I'd just like to ask, and I know you can't answer it now, has there been any public meetings on this? Will there be to take the public's point of view? And thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. So Speaker seven was low. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting us speak, and I can't speak as eloquently as all these other people do. I get too nervous in front of groups and stuff. But I want to let you know that The Ridge needs to stay. My kids took lessons there. We play there. My grandson plays with me there. It's needed. We don't want to be packed full of people. It's already bad on forty-one. I just had to go around another accident on forty-one and sixty-four. We don't need that. Make it a shining star of the city that people want to come to the city. You've got hotels around here that people, people go places to play golf, to vacation. It would be nice to have a beautiful course like The Ridge for them to go to. And I sincerely hope that you'll think hard about closing it. It means a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Speaker nine.
Hi, I'm here to object to the closing of The Ridge Golf Course. It's more than a golf course. It supports local businesses and is a vital part of the entire Salt Lake Valley. And by the way, I live in Taylorsville. I golf in the Women's League on Wednesdays, and I've met so many amazing women and friends and have great friends from people that I've met at the league. And to see The Ridge close would be a huge detriment to the community and to the entire Salt Lake Valley. It would have an impact on all ages of golfers, from young kids to old retired folks like me. And as an older woman, golf helps me stay active and keeps me connected to family and friends. Golf is an activity and a sport that's still relatively affordable to a lot of people, and it's something that families can do together. I certainly can't afford to go to a jazz game. I can't go skiing because it's just so far out of my price range. I can't even really afford to go to a baseball game and, you know, take my family to a baseball game. The Ridge is, as many people have said, they have high school tournaments there. Businesses such as Delta have their company tournaments there, and do you all want that money to go to another city, to another golf course? Why not keep it at The Ridge and in West Valley City? We can't take away all the open space. There's more to it than just development. And are there other open spaces that are on the chopping block, all in the name of development? Can you answer why and who's pushing you to close The Ridge? Can you answer why and who's pushing you to close the Ridge? And like this sign says back here, greens, not greed. And I hope you really reconsider what impact closing the Ridge would have on the entire state of Utah. Thanks for your time and thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. Speaker ten.
Good evening, Mayor Lang, council. My name is David Baker. I've lived in West Valley since nineteen eighty-five, excuse me, since nineteen eighty-five. My grandparents moved here in nineteen fifty-five, and we still have family that lived in that home. So a longtime association with the city. One of the things that I've been aware of my whole life is West Valley has suffered from reputation. I think these golf courses are a point of pride. I think that, you know, there are a number of things that have happened. And I think especially since West Valley Incorporated that have moved us in the right direction. But when you look at the corporate campus and the layout of Stone Bridge, it's, it's unequal. That's, that's, that's just a treasure for our city. And the Ridge started out as a gravel pit. I mean, it was a big hole in the mountain, and that was turned into something really nice. So we, we've done an investment in that as a city that goes back generationally almost at this point. So I think that it's, it's really short-sighted. And I think that we should, we should keep them as a, as a point of pride. And all the things that have been mentioned here, as far as the open space, the green space, the cutting the heat signature, especially with Stone Bridge as far as the riparian habitat and the migratory birds, it's very important. And the organizations that have been involved with doing all this, from the Army Corps of Engineers to the state of Utah, when we redid the Ridge, the investment isn't just the city at this point, it's everybody. And I think as a member of the county, that this falls into place as well, that we're, makes us a good we're holding up our end, so to speak. You know, the county averages about one course for seventy thousand people. That's where we are. We have a hundred and forty-seven thousand people, and we have two golf courses. But I, I, I don't know why this is even considered because golf courses pay for themselves. And so I just, it's, it seems to me that it shouldn't even be on the table. But I'm really disturbed by the fact that this has even come up for discussion or that this should almost be on the agenda before the council, before it's even any work at all or preliminary work done whatsoever. And I would like to say that because we all know that we're probably going to be a quarter million people before, you know, you blink an eye, that we shouldn't be thinking about what we're going to do with these two courses, but where are we going to put the next one?
Thank you. Speaker eleven.
Mayor Lang, city council and city leaders. Many of us are here tonight on behalf of the more than six hundred residents of West Valley City that attend classes every single week at the My Hometown Community Resource Centers. And on behalf of them, we express a very heartfelt appreciation for your incredible support of my hometown and of the residents of West Valley City. As you know, that on any given Saturday during the spring and summer and the fall, there are a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty people that convene and work together to help beautify West Valley City and make it an attractive, beautiful city to live in and a wonderful place to raise a family. And we just want you to hear the heartfelt thanks from all of them for that support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker twelve.
Good evening. My name's Randy Dodson. I'm the publisher of Fairways Magazine. And Fairways is the membership magazine for the Utah Golf Association, which is forty-seven thousand members strong. I'm also a founding member of the Golf Alliance for Utah, which is made up of the Utah PGA, the Utah Golf Association, the Utah Chapter, the Golf Course Superintendents Association of America, the Club Managers Association of America, and Fairways Media. I've delivered to Nicole a position and statement letter on this topic and hope that you will take time to read that letter. We stand in support of keeping the Ridge, the Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more person, if you'd like to speak at this time. Hey, name an address, please.
My name is Robin Rolfe-Griffiths. I live at seventy-one thirty-nine West Hawkview Way, West Valley City. And thank you for the time this evening, council members and mayor. I oppose selling the Ridge. I echo what my friend Brian said about the Veterans League there. And I've heard many passionate people come and tell you what, why they also oppose selling the Ridge. Let me appeal to you just a little bit differently. The Ridge is the only golf course in Salt Lake and one of only two in Utah that has a Veterans League. Right now, West Valley City is kind of a leader. I don't know if it's intentional. It seems intentional in honoring veterans. And if you do this, it will lose a little bit of traction there. I can speak for myself. I'm a combat veteran. I am a Purple Heart recipient. Can also speak for other golfers and veterans, Kyle Maples, Drew Thompson, who I had their permission to speak for them tonight. And so also, just besides the community, ripping this course away from the community, it would be a massive mistake to do this as far as green space and public space goes. There's lots of wildlife that happens on, on the golf course. If you've not ever been out there, come on out. I'll, I'll show you. There's plenty of deer. There's a fox den out there and a lot of different species of birds that can exist in the area in West Valley City, but only on the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Is there any comments from the council?
Yep. Yeah. If I can not cough, I hear fellow coughers out there, so thank you for making me feel welcome. I just want to reiterate that green space is a vital part of West Valley City. We have not scheduled any discussion about this. I appreciate the passion of the residents of West Valley. After last week's meeting, one of the people that was there, who happens to be my neighbor, I said, is there some way that we can improve the golf course? Because there's always room for improvement, and he gave a few ideas. So I would hope that you know that your city council is engaged. They listen, and they want the best for the city and its residents. And I hope that you'll continue to support us as we make tough decisions, whatever they may be. And know that we have the best interests of West Valley residents, and at least I do in my thoughts at all time. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Peely.
Thank you, Mayor. If you will forgive my indulgence here. I've been told as a young city manager in city council meeting, this isn't your meeting, so you don't speak unless you're spoken to. But I feel the need to maybe explain why we're here and how we got here. There were people that have asked questions here of why we're even having this on the agenda. And I'm going to raise my hand and tell you it's my fault. And I appreciate the council considering it. And I'm going to go through, I'm going to lay it all on the table and tell you exactly why I brought this forward. When I first got here, there had been, there was an offer for the, for the golf course. I think it was twelve million dollars. And we, you know, I think it was me and our Economic Development Director that were talking. We didn't even think to bring that to the council because that was, it wasn't just no, it was heck no, we're not going to do that. Somebody mentioned Eagle Mountain and the ranches. It's a story where we actually took the golf course because it was failing. And because we saw the importance of a golf course in the community, we took it, even though it was losing money, and then turned around and put it back out. So that's a different story. But one of the reasons I, I feel the need to share this is because I brought it to the council. And so when we went to the council, we, staff went to the council in a closed session. And I can say it now because it's been leaked out from, from a closed session. I can talk about these things. Well, maybe I can't talk about these things, but I, I feel like I need to. At the very least, I asked the council if we can get an appraisal on these, both of these golf courses. Because apparently we did get offers previously. And we got an appraisal. And the appraisal was for the Ridge and Stone Bridge. And what the Ridge was like five million dollars, and Stone Bridge was six million dollars. And we were thinking, there's no way we would even consider selling this thing. Definitely not at twelve, definitely not at twenty. The problem is, is the appraisal also included the appraisal of the land. And Stone Bridge was worth over three hundred million dollars. And the Ridge was worth over two hundred and twenty million dollars. And so as the city manager, the first thing I think of, I see this greens, not greed. I see community over cash. The first thing I think of is the forty-old playgrounds that haven't been replaced because we don't have money. We talk about the veterans. We have a Veterans Memorial that can't get funded because we don't have money. We have sidewalk repairs all throughout the city that's in need of sidewalks that are needed repairs. We have roads that need maintenance. We have looming debt, forty million dollar debt that we're going to have to start paying on for the Maverick Center and the Culture Celebration Center that's coming due. We have employees that have not gotten colas this year because we were short on, on our general fund. We have a fire station that needs to be built. We have fifteen firefighters, new firefighters we need to hire. We have twelve new police officers that have been requested to increase our, our police force. We have a fire training facility that's put on the back burner for years. We have a, a police training facility that's put on the back burner for years. Millions and millions of dollars that the city needs, and those are one-time expenses. Now, I don't like using one-time revenue for one-time expenses. When you think about two hundred million dollars, even if you bought treasury notes with two hundred million dollars, you can get ten million dollars of a year, a year just living off the interest. I don't know, nobody showed up to the property tax, to the taxation hearing, but we just raised property tax. I came and asked the council for property tax increase because I need to pay for stuff. And so I went to the council and before we even went to the council, what we did was we looked at how many people actually golf, how many residents of West Valley City actually golf. And it sure seems like a lot, but honestly, less than one percent. That's what the stats are. That's, that's what the statistics are. Also, when we did the survey, so this is all before, we did, we did a survey that asked residents, what would you spend money on? What would you spend money on? And we made a list. We had parks. We had all kinds of different amenities. And guess what was dead last? The golf course. We also did an analysis to see where people are coming from to the golf courses, both of them. We have AI software that we can actually run a data analysis by zip code. Your, your cell phones show that when you come to the golf course, and you can see where people are coming from, where they're spending money. See, golf courses don't pay for themselves. But this course is pretty close because this is one thing that we knew for sure. This course is run very well, and that has to do with the people that work there. Our golf pros, our superintendents. This is one of the best golf courses in the state. And so it does seem counter to even think about selling it. But it, it doesn't, it doesn't make money. In fact, operationally, it does cover, which is very rare, and they should receive all the kudos for that. Because I believe it's our, our staff there that's, that's making it possible. But capital costs, we're in the hole, close to two million dollars for these courses, just on capital costs. And that's, that's very good. We don't even have debt service on this. So you are correct in saying this is a gem. This is a, this is a jewel. And so I'm, I'm not trying to convince you of, or anybody at this point, because where we're at, and this is truly where we're at. And I, I really want to, my whole purpose, Mayor and Council, is to maybe take some of the pressure off of you. Because what I want everybody to realize is that I brought this to the council. All they gave me direction for, the only thumbs up they gave me was to get the appraisal. When I came back after I presented all of this, I said, can we look at exploring options on developing? Nobody gave me a yes. They didn't tell me you can go do this. But the next step was an ALTA survey, which is basically, basically a title report on steroids. And so they gave me authorization to go get an ALTA survey. That ALTA survey is not completed. And so that's where we are, and that's why we're here. And unfortunately, it was leaked that the city is selling this. I had to go and, and get our, and I, to me, this was the most devastating part of this is our, our, our employees at the golf courses feeling like they're losing their jobs, and we haven't even decided anything. But all we were doing was trying to figure out if this is what is in the best interest for the city. When we look at all these expenses, all these things that are looming, when you think of a land that's worth over two hundred million dollars and the fact that we have another golf course, we have another one. To not look at it would be would be a shame to at least not take a look at it. And that's all the council and mayor has done, has given me authority to, is take a look at it. And so that ALTA survey has not been brought back to the, to the council yet. It's not done yet. We're waiting on it. It should be a couple of weeks before we get it back. It took ninety days or sixty to nine. That's why we, we met on this and we haven't shared anything about it. Because it, it could be a moot point depending on what comes back from that ALTA survey. So this isn't about greed. This isn't about developers. This is about really trying to find what's best for the city, using the assets that we have to figure out a way to, and he's shaking his head here, but I, I'm telling you, this is exactly what, this is exactly where we, we are, and this is why we're here. The thing is, with, with the mayor and council, one of the things that were said is that they don't want identity. If we were ever to do this, identity wouldn't be considered. This would be an opportunity because we are missing single-family homes that are, are valuable in our city. This would be another opportunity to, to do that. And so again, I, I'm not trying to convince you one way or another. In fact, that's not my job, and that's not where I'm at right now. But what I do want you to walk away with is the truth. And where we're at and why we're here and what caused all of this to come to this point. I appreciate it and I get it. I'll be honest, I don't play golf, but I know, like I said, I, we went and, we went and acquired a golf course as a city because we knew how valuable that was. And we, we were creative so that we can keep it. And so I, and I know this is a jewel. This is, this is a jewel of, of West Valley. But this is why we're looking at it. I just, that's all, if you can walk away with anything that I said today, you'll understand the truth of why we're even looking at it. That's, that question has come up many times throughout your comments, and that's, that's it. This isn't about trying to convince you one way or another. And in a few weeks, we'll get the ALTA survey back. We'll come back to the council and have a discussion about it. And you'll have more opportunity to express your opinions. But again, Mayor, Council, please forgive my indulgence. I just felt like I needed to share that with these comments that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll take a, we'll close the public hearing portion and take a five-minute break. You don't have to stay through the whole meeting because it's pages tonight. So we'll just take a break so that those who want to leave may, and then we'll be back in about five minutes. Okay, thank you.